Attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order for the July 14th, 2022 Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome both our in-person and virtual audience to the meeting this evening. For our in-person attendees, when your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council. For our virtual attendees during the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the audience participation portion, please press the raise hand symbol and the meeting organizer will notify us if you'd like to speak. With that, I would like to start us off with the first item on our agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and ask all to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and Tom, I think we had one update?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have one suggested revision. This is an updated calendar of events. This is item number seven on your agenda. The only change is the cancellation of the July 28th EDA meeting for lack of agenda items.
Perfect. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items that are not the regular agenda, and we have a total of 10 minutes for this time or for this item. I usually have somebody signed in looking to talk on 5C, correct? And so we'll wait till we get there and have you come up then, just so you don't think you got skipped as we're doing this part of the meeting. So, meeting organizer, do we have anyone in the virtual audience who would like to speak during the audience participation portion?
Mr. Mayor, we have no one who would like to speak.
Thank you. Tom?
Mr. Mayor, if we could have a motion on the approval of the-
Well, that would certainly be helpful, wouldn't it? So, thank you. All right, we have a motion from a council member, Grendel, and a second from council member, Melander, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll get us back on track somehow here. So, we had no, no one wishing to speak from the virtual audience for the audience participation portion. Do we have anybody in the live audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close the audience participation portion and move on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. Council members, are there any items you would like to pull? Seeing none, citizens in the room, are there any items you would like to pull? Seeing none in the room, meeting organizer, do we have anyone in the virtual audience who would like to pull any items this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we have no one who would like to pull any items.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Second. Motion from Goodwin and a second from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We'll move on to our regular agenda. The first item on that agenda is 5A, and that is to proclaim July 20th, 2022 as Park and Recreation Month. And Eric, anything you'd like, the floor's all yours.
Mr. Mayor of the council, we're just asking the council to proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month, as they are doing that across the nation. So, in the interest of time, I can forego reading, but I certainly am open to reading it if you'd like me to.
Please read it. We, these guys are working really hard, and I don't want to take away from any recognition they deserve.
All right. So, proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Apple Valley. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Apple Valley, Minnesota, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating issues such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation increases the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environment well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Recreation, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Apple Valley recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby proclaims the month of July 2022 to be Parks and Recreation Month. In Apple Valley, and there just all citizens to enjoy the many benefits of Parks and Recreation, proclaim this 14th day of July 2022.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion from Bergman and a second from Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Hey, Eric, one question, right? We're just, just curious. Roughly, how many people do we have working for us in our park and recreation area?
Well, in the summer months, we have much more than we do in the winter months, and right now, we're probably in the neighborhood of about 300, 370 people. Those are both full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees. And obviously, in the summer months, we employ a lot of seasonal employees with maintaining our parks, our lifeguards, our golf course staff, things like that.
There's still opportunities to work for Park and Recreation.
And there are still opportunities, and we're still looking for the puppet wagon. If anyone's interested, somebody pull some strings.
Wow. Thank you, Eric.
Councilman Bergman has time for me.
Dominique Hursken used to do it. I don't know what she's doing.
Do we all need to take shifts at the puppet wagon? Is that what, is that what's up next?
I'm not doing the puppet wagon.
All right. We're going to move on to item 5B and talk about Night to Unite, and Pam, I think you've got this one.
I don't know if I can follow that.
Do you have any bad jokes to, uh?
I do. Some of them might be bad jokes. I'm a little disappointed now. All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight to talk to you about Night to Unite, which is happening on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. As you all know, this is a night where we get neighbors together, celebrate crime prevention efforts, and build police community partnerships. Slight, oh, it doesn't move. All right. So, this year, we are going to be having a briefing at the police department. We're inviting you guys to come and join us for that. Obviously, we do this every year. We'll be dividing up our parties and sending people out with goodies to visit with the neighborhoods. The city right now has 76 registrations for the event. We have a registration deadline of July 26, so we're still taking registrations, encouraging people to register their parties with us, get on our list so that we can visit with them if they would so choose. We've got, obviously, the city council, police, fire, and hopefully some department heads that will be helping us out again this year. Couple of things we're highlighting is the school supply drive. This is a huge supply drive for the ISD 196. They encourage us to do this every year. They are so appreciative of the efforts that the community is able to provide to students in need in the district. Photo on the left, or on my left on the screen there is last year's donations. I don't know that the gal who I coordinate with got a full picture, but this is one that she sent me of some of the donations that came in, which they're always very appreciative. They love it. In addition to that, we are promoting a chalk art, chalk art contest again. This is our second year doing it. It is, we're encouraging neighborhoods who are gathered for the Night to Unite to get their best Picasso's out, do some chalk art somewhere, take photos of it, and submit that to us. We will be giving the top three vote-getters of the photos turned in some little prize packs as prizes. Yeah, it was a good success last year. I think that is pictured, I want to say that's our second-place winner with Officer Guadalhara there. We'll go out and deliver the gift baskets and the prize. We give them the laminated picture of their chalk art and a little ribbon. So, yeah, good time was had by all last year. So, I encourage you guys to join us again this year. I'm always happy to have council participation and looking forward to it again. Pray for good weather. And I have a proclamation as well.
Why don't you go ahead and read the proclamation?
All right.
And we will do that, and anybody else can ask questions after that. So, good, Pam.
City of Apple Valley proclamation, whereas the Minnesota Crime Prevention Association, AAA of Minnesota, Iowa, and local law enforcement agencies is sponsoring a statewide program called Night to Unite on August 2nd, 2022, and whereas the Night to Unite is designed to get to know one another in your neighborhood, build neighborhood involvement by bringing police and communities together, and to bring in an awareness to crime prevention and local law enforcement efforts, and whereas Night to Unite supports the idea that crime prevention is an inexpensive, effective tool in strengthening police and community partnerships, and whereas Night to Unite provides opportunities to celebrate the ongoing work of law enforcement and neighborhoods in Apple Valley by working together to fight crime and victimization and increase public safety for all citizens, and whereas the citizens of Apple Valley play an important role in assisting the Apple Valley Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby calls upon all citizens of Apple Valley to participate in Night to Unite on August 2nd, 2022. Further, let it be resolved that in Apple Valley, Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, is hereby proclaimed as Night to Unite, proclaimed this 14th day of July, 2022.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Grendel and a second from Melander. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And before Pam steps away, were there questions? John, did you have one?
Yes. Thanks again, Pam. Your name came up, and you may be part of it. I'm sure you are, but this Night to Unite, Fishing with the Cops, you were there, the child seats that are there. A lot of residents at Fishing, Fishing with the Cops, your name was brought up. I would talk about some things, and they would go, well, Pam did this, Pam does that. So, your name has got out there, but the kudos go to you and the division of the police division for what they do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think sadly, I've been here a long time, so people remember the name.
You gotta be worried when you say your name came up, though, right?
I know, right? I was like, oh, gosh, is that good?
Where's that going?
There they go.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Well, thanks.
I got some great goodies for you guys this year to hand out, too.
We like goodies.
I know. Excellent. Well, I look forward to seeing everybody on Tuesday, August 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Matt, how's our, Matt, are you taking the next item, I believe?
Yes.
The next item is 5C, which is to discuss the hardship grant program for replacement of dead sod in the 2018 to 2020 street, excuse me, street and utility project areas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. You know, you're all well aware of this topic. It's been before you at your last couple informal meetings. So, I'll, I'll start with a brief review primarily for those in the audience and those at home of, of the issue we're discussing here tonight. So, just a little agenda for our discussion topics. Again, we'll go through a brief review of the issue, some concerns from the last meeting, review those, and out of the last meeting, staff put their heads together, and now that's what's prompted us to bring back this grant proposal here before you all tonight. I'll discuss the public purpose of the grant. Still have a couple of additional options if you didn't want to go with the grant as proposed, and then our next steps. So, just a brief review of the issue. Over the last three years, well, four years, I guess, going back to 2018, we had some street and utility improvement areas down in the southwest part of town, what we're calling the Redwood area, and then along Garden View, that experienced some dying off of the sod, primarily in the Boulevard area. We had, as this slide shows, about 20% of the properties, 57 out of a little over 300, that experienced this dead sod. And I did want to mention, though, part of our contracts when we, so when we redo the street, we, of course, get into the Boulevard, we tear up the sod, we restore that sod. Part of the requirement with the city contract is that the contractor is going to warranty that and guarantee that sod's going to live for the first 45 days. City staff does an inspection of that at the 45-day mark to ensure that the sod is living. If any's dead or dying off, we, we mark it and tell the contractor, you got to replace this. So, at the 45-day period, all of this sod that has since died off was living. Of course, though, we do want to mention that last year's drought, just about a year ago, in July of 2021, obviously had a significant impact on, on young sod, especially if it was not being watered. So, a couple concerns from the last council meeting, we did come forward with, well, the city could do a city-led project, and there were some significant costs with that to either reseed or resod. Then there were also some concerns on if it's a city project, again, we possibly see continuing dying off, what sod not being watered, that sort of thing. And then also a little concern with, are we setting any precedent with, again, coming back years later? So, after that meeting, again, as I mentioned, staff put our heads together. We've now come forward with a plan that we think would address this and still replace the dead sod. So, what that proposal is, is what we're terming a drought hardship grant. Again, the drought last year certainly was a hardship on, on this new young sod that the city project had put in. So, we would propose that to any property within the street project areas from 2018 to 2020, again, in that Redwood, Garden View area, this, they would be able to apply for this hardship grant. And what that would do would be a reimbursement grant. So, a property owner would, if they want to resod, they would buy their sod, buy their topsoil, hire it out possibly, do it, or do it themselves. And then this grant would provide up to 50% or half the cost of, of the materials or labor to resod, if you would, or reseed. And then up to a maximum, so it'd be 50%, but up to a maximum of $1,500 per lot. That would be the maximum that one lot could receive. And again, the reimbursement would be for material costs, so the seed, sodding, if they want to add topsoil, and then any mulch after they do it. And then, like I said, any hired labor costs, we would allow, too. Couple other grant parameters, we would have a simple application to help us track at this and have a paper trail. We would want to require receipts for auditing purposes to ensure, you know, if sod was bought at Home Depot, topsoil, what have you, we can see that, and then that's how we would calculate their 50% reimbursement. We would, of course, inspect the property both before to ensure that they, in fact, did have dead sod, like this picture shows, and then afterward also to make sure that new sod got put in or, or seed is coming up if they go the seed drought. One other thing I want to mention with this proposal, we would offer city staff, I spoke with our street superintendent, we could go out there and pick up the dead sod. We would just ask residents to pile it up, if you will, in their driveway, on the Boulevard, before they're doing their work. This is something similar to what we did last year after the tornado came through and there was significant tree debris. We said, we'll come by, just stack the wood up on your Boulevard. So, a similar thought process. And in terms of cost, we, if, if every property, all 57 of them, got the maximum reimbursement of $1,500, that cost would be $85,500. So, about half the cost of what the council saw last time for the city-led project.
Matt, I'm going to pause you on that picture for just a second, because I think it goes into, we spent a significant amount of time at the last informal talking about this with many more pictures, right, and many more kind of existing conditions. So, this was part of the 20, this neighborhood, which I know very well, was part of the 2019 project area, I believe, or 2020, I forget which right now.
2018, 19, and then 20 also.
Right. So, this, this would have been, but this particular picture, I think, was 2019.
You're correct. Ram's though, yes.
Right? So, so this sod went in in 2019, actually looked okay at the end of 2019, probably looked okay through 2020, right, and then died off kind of in the drought of last year. But the, in the, in the foreground of the picture, right, is what was installed at the same time as this, as the property you see in the background, right, which just kind of goes to-
Correct.
Right. Not a contractor fault, not, not a faulty sod, but truly, right, drought conditions, properties treated differently, that, that young sod did not survive in some areas, which is why we have 20-plus percent.
Yep.
Right? That didn't make it. So, I just wanted, you had a bunch more of these. I think this is a good picture of two lawns treated differently by different people and getting a different outcome. So.
Very good point, Mr. Mayor. And we would offer, it's, it probably comes down to watering, to be quite frank, properties that, that were watering, like the one across the street, if you on the picture on the screen, on that sod survived. The one in the, near to us on the screen, you can see that Boulevard sod is dead.
Go ahead. Thank, thank you for that pause there, Pip.
And, and then we did look at, well, what would this possibly cost a homeowner under this program? So, our city engineer and his staff took a look at the average properties out there, took a look at how much dead sod they had, and they calculated that. On average, we'd be talking about 1,500 square feet per lot that a property owner would, would probably look to replace. And then we assumed two inches of topsoil they might want to put in. So, staff went and looked at our local, local stores. So, in option A here up at the top, we're showing what would it cost to sod and topsoil. Again, city will pick up the dead sod, so then they just have to put down their topsoil and sod. So, between Home Depot, Menards, and Paul's, and we all know they all run sales each week and that sort of thing. So, when we went and looked, it appears Paul's was a little cheaper. They're all in that 2,400 to 2,700. So, again, assuming 1,500 square feet, and you need to put back two inches of topsoil along with the sod, that's what the total cost would, would look like. So, our grant being 50% of that would fall within our 1,500 max. And then option B, of course, is, is the seeding. As you might imagine, it's a little cheaper. Again, with sales and whatnot, this, this past week, when we looked, Menards was a little cheaper. So, for under $900 for that amount of area, it looks like somebody could get their yard seeded, and then the grant would cover 50% of that. And then if residents wanted to get together and, and hire hydroseed, which is sprayed in, it typically requires a contractor, there's a truck and a pump and things, that would probably be around $2,000, we'd estimate. So, again, our grant, though, and the max would certainly be within all of these ranges to help cover that. One, one thing in reviewing this with our city attorney did recommend that if the city's going to look at providing public funds to people, then we should define a public purpose for the grant. So, these are the three things that, that we would offer and write into the grant. One is restoration of the public right-of-way. Obviously, the Boulevard, Street Boulevard, is within the city's public right-of-way. This grant would go to that. So, it'd help prevent erosion by not having bare dirt or, or anything dead there, and then preventing weed growth, too. That's within our city code. So, having vegetation that, that's, that's growing and alive sod or seed, that would help prevent that. So, that's the public purpose for the grant. But certainly, if, if the council didn't want to go with, with this proposal, there's a couple other options that we wanted to bring forward. One is still, we could do nothing. We haven't done a grant like this before, but given the, the drought last year, we thought, you know, this is a good proposal. So, but doing nothing would reinforce that the city doesn't really have a responsibility to, to correct this. And then we could vary the grant parameters. If council felt the 50% was too high or too low, we could vary that. The same with the maximum of 1,500, we could, we could vary that. So, our next steps, of course, this is on, on your agenda. That's what we're going through right now. So, we'd look for, for feedback and possible approval from the council for this tonight, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
So, let's, let's take questions. We do have somebody in the audience who wanted to speak to this, so maybe we take a couple questions. I want to make sure, before we get too far in discussion, that we give him a chance to speak as well, so we can consider that. You guys okay with that? Okay?
You don't let him speak first.
Perfect. That works fine. That works fine. So, Graham, you want to come, come forward? Just, I've got your stuff here. Just want to state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you a couple minutes.
All right. Graham DeCoursey. I just moved here a year ago, the 23rd of July. I've been trying to contact the city for the entire year about my yard, because it's been dying slowly since then. And this, I just heard about this meeting and you guys actually tackling it today. So, I've been trying to reach out to the city. I've been told, talk to this person, talk to that person, or just getting no response. I may be in this unique position. If it was just, I didn't water my lawn and it died, I understand. I can lay sod. That's no problem. But the soil is really compacted from machinery, from the, the roadwork that was done. It's complete hardpan. You can't get your finger in the soil. So, the sod that was laid had no chance to grow. The roots couldn't take hold. It was destined to die, basically. I watered it completely, tried to keep it up without tilling the soil first. It didn't have a chance. And so, I don't, if it was just a matter of I had to lay sod down and water it, I can do that myself. I'm landscaping my backyard. But having to till and remove and relay all that, that's added extra costs that should have been done the first time.
Yep. So, can we have Matt just, or Brandon, one of the two, just, can you guys just connect offline? I mean, this is a little separate from this issue.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm actually meeting with-
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm actually meeting with Graham at his residence-
Oh, cool.
Wednesday. There was some communications that did get to me right away. We struggled with communication to the residents about this issue for the last several months. That's on, on us, and we've had this discussion. I'm planning to meet with him to look at his yard individually, like I have with all the other residents.
Yep. I would say just the communication piece, right? If you jump on the website, you can email any of us there. So, right, if you don't think you're getting a response, please reach out. It's, it's usually just backlog of stuff, and it's not intentional, but-
Oh, yeah.
But really, that's, we want to hear that, too. So, it sounds like you are, you guys are already talking, which is great. And Ruth, did you have something else on?
No. I mean, I think we've heard the issue, so let's have our discussion if they're already meeting, so.
Cool. Yeah, that's, let's make sure they were talking. Anything else? I don't want to cut you short, too. So.
No, no. I just wanted to make sure.
Wonderful. Thanks. Thanks for stopping in, and welcome to Apple Valley, despite the very dead sod. All right. Yeah, feel free to reach out, though, if you need something, please. Do we have anyone else in the audience? As long as just make sure we, we cover it here. Anyone else in the audience who wants to talk about this one before we start discussion? If not, Ruth, I'll let you jump in.
Thank you. And putting this issue aside, it's unique from what we're talking about up here. So, we're going to put that aside, and we'll let Brandon and you discuss if that's something that was an issue with the city. I'm going to speak against this tonight, and I also talked about it at the informal. I mean, if 80% of the property's grass survived and 20% didn't, I mean, obviously, you look at these pictures. One is total green, and one is next, wasn't taken care of it. It just couldn't have been. And so, you know, we don't assess for road reconstruction, and we all know we have a challenge down the road here trying to make sure this is funded. So, I can't see that we can pay twice for projects here. Like I say, it's, it's a financial issue, and I, I just can't support this. And if it comes down to watering, like Matt said, that's not, I, I don't think other taxpayers should pay for that. I mean, my Boulevard is a hardship, too. I mean, we all went through the drought here, and we communicated how many times about taking care of, about watering, twice, three times?
At least twice.
At least twice, we let them know that they had to take care of, of the sod. So, so the city isn't at fault, the contractor isn't at fault, and I don't see why taxpayers should pay for the projects twice. So, I'm speaking against the proposal, and I have sympathy. We all are in the drought. I mean, I have, I have an oak tree that didn't come back this year, and it doesn't have oak wood or anything. The poor little thing just didn't make it. Just didn't make it. So, you know, we're all in the same hardship here.
Councilman Bergman was up first, and then Councilman Goodwin, I believe.
Thank you. So, I'll ask the first, one of the, one of, a couple of questions that I have. Did any one time for Matt, the city attorney, I don't care if Brandon, Tom, well answers this, we keep hearing the word drought during this timeframe, okay? It's open for interpretation. Did, at any one time, did Matt council or the state of Minnesota make us or alter us from our watering ban or restrictions that we have implemented in this, this city since I've been on the council? That would be questioned, that would be the question, and I, and I ask that further, is because in our ordinance, right now, we have 10 to 6 or 11 to 6 that we cannot water, we cannot water. However, in our ordinance, it has- has that we can handwater seeds, sods, plantings, new plantings, all day long. We can water cars. So I, for one, all of us, for one, know that your division, the contractors, did an exceptional job in doing what they needed to do, and they had, and they went to 45 days and passed 45 days, and lovely drones are showing that. Okay, so right now, I have a problem with it, and yes, my degree is in that, but I did some experimenting in the last, during our drought right now, seeding. I seeded some of my yard because I took two trees out of my backyard, watered it three times a day, three minutes a day, three times, nine minutes total. In four days, I had sod, or seed. I took sod that was on my property around that tree, cut it back so I could get the roots out, and laid the sod back on top of it, fluffed up, like the gentleman said, fluffed up the compacted soil, fluffed up the sod ball, laid it down, and that was also watered in that area nine minutes a day. And then in less than four days, all this stuff was coming up. So people want to talk about the drought? Yeah, we have a drought, but our rules were not restricted by any government entity that said we could not water. And as we see in this picture right here, you go to the, I'm looking to the property to whatever side, you got green grass there, and they have, may have lots of reasons. They may have a sprinkler system or not. This person up front may have a sprinkler system or not. But I highly doubt that. But from right now, for looking at this for as long as all of us have looked at it, and I've changed my mind a couple of times, but I go down to what I just brought right now. I find no fault of us, and tonight, Councilmember Grendel brought to our attention at informals of a project that was done last year, and their easements are in the same condition. I fully fear that this is just going to go down to the next step, to the next step, to the next step. And I would ask the question again. You brought broadband into this community, and yes, some of us questioned, are they coming back to reseed it or do whatever? Did anybody complain when around that box, which is in easement? Did anybody call and say, hey, you got to get out here and water that? No.
Yeah, they did.
Well, right. But again, we have to take responsibility of it. We were not handicapped as residents, not, we could water. So as of, and right now, yes. I was not happy at the informal, in the informal meeting, but all these that I've asked right now, I don't believe the rules have changed, and people have, and comments have been made, there was no assessments. I'm down that road. And we've had conversation about how much to spend. As of right now, it's, I'm voting no for this. And I have a degree in this, and that's the sad part of this, is do I like green grass? Do I like nice plants? You bet I do. But there's a point where, when things are pointed to us that are done right by everybody, and then after 45, 60, 90 days or a year later, they're coming back and saying something, that's where I have my issue. Thank you.
We have Councilwoman Goodwin next, and then Councilwoman Blander, and then Councilwoman Grendel has a follow-up, I think. So let's go in that order.
Well, one of the things we're dealing with here, quite frankly, is human nature. We had some people that probably watered a lot that first year, and it looked pretty good. Second year, looked good in the spring, maybe. But we had a drought, and now we have another drought. And Councilmember Grendel's talked about the situation in her neighborhood. There's some things that we can do down the road as a city. I'll suggest this first. If we're going to a new neighborhood next year, and we're going to do the same kind of thing, where we're rebuilding a road, I think we should have, I don't care if it's a one-page essay or a 20-page essay, we have people in this community, in our staff, that can write some very, very good things, to just let the new people next year know what happened the last few years. And I think if we had that kind of awareness, and we let people know what happened in the past, I think that would solve some of the problems. And if we continue to have drought, maybe what we should do, and this will be public relations, and I understand that, we just might want to send notices out to people that there's a drought, to people that are having their lawns done. I mean, there's some things we can do that are just public relations down the road that can solve part of this issue. Okay? Now, I was talking about the gentleman's issue with the hard ground. I've heard this from a number of people. I've heard that from a number of people, some very prominent people. I've also had people tell me they've had experts come out and look at the lawn, and the lawn expert, whoever the hell that is, says the sod was no good. I don't know. I think this is a very good compromise. $85,000, and I think the city is looking at it and saying, we're trying to do the right thing here. I wish, I wish we had been more active in the past, letting you know what's going on. And it's all human nature. That's what I would do. I'd let people know next year what the heck's going on, and we might have a drought. And if we do have a drought, what I would do is the city, I would put a letter out to everybody that, in all these streets. That's what I would do. Now, this is a relatively small amount of money, and I think it's a good compromise. And I think it shows that the city is trying to at least rectify a problem that we all know exists. I mean, you still have people out there that say the ground was harder than Iraq. You still have people out there that say they called experts, and the experts said the sod was no good. And that's all public relations, and that's all politics and everything else, and I understand that. But I think this is a very good compromise. But I think if we do more PR going forward, we'll have less of these problems. But there's something else that I think Councilmember Grendel mentioned that I think we should mention here. Years ago, as a city, we don't have special assessments for roads. Now, this is $1,500, and I understand that. But if you lived in Lakeville, Burnsville, Regan, you would have had a special assessment between $15,000 and $20,000 for rebuilding the road in front of your home. And I think the council should congratulate ourselves on the foresight we had with that, because we wouldn't be having this kind of a problem. We may be having some kind of a problem. But I mean, if we lived in other cities, we wouldn't be looking at something like this. We'd be looking at people who got a special assessment for $15,000 or $20,000 to rebuild the road in front of their house. And I think this council should be very proud of the fact that many, many years ago, we thought that was a bad idea.
Perfect. As you listen to Tom's question, can you scroll back to the, like, four slide in that's got the map of the year of the installs? Because I think that tells a little bit of a story as well. Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Right.
That one. Thank you.
Tom, you said one of the points I was going to bring up about the special assessments for road repairs, and that's a pretty common practice. And I saw an example of that with my professional hat on, just a couple of years back, a 40-foot lot in Minneapolis got a $16,000 assessment. And that's pretty common. I believe Bloomington also has assessments when they do road repairs.
I saw an article about a home in Indiana that had a $36,000 special assessment. So that's happening in all these other cities.
Surprise, surprise. That's, it's, it's our responsibility to spend everybody's money wisely. And we just had a review tonight of our financial conditions and where we stand as a city, and what we've taken in, what we spend it on, says that we're pretty good stewards, it appears. And I can't take responsibility for this. We've got some excellent staff of being pretty frugal in delivering a lot of bang for the buck to our citizens. This is a, this is a tough call here with a dead sod. And, but on the other hand, you know, there's a lot of other citizens that would pick up a portion of that $85,000 bucks. It really had nothing to do with the problem, or bore any responsibility for curing the problem. So it's tough. If I'm that other guy, and I would be one of the other guys, you know, some of my tax money is going without a benefit to me. Now, you can say, yeah, public right-of-way. So I drive past the street, and it's brown, and it's not green. What's that worth to me? I don't know. It's tough. And folks write us, write emails to the city, and we all get copied on that. And we read all of those emails. And I know some people are pretty hot under the collar about it. And if I were that situation, I might be as well. But it's still our job, as I perceive it up here, to be good stewards of the money that's collected in taxes for the city. And I guess I go along with what Councilmembers Bergman and Grendel have voiced so far. It's tough for me to support this.
Ruth, did you have a?
Yeah, thank you. So I have to ask the gentleman, I apologize, what was your name again?
Graham.
So you say you just moved there in 2021, a year ago, and the last sod went in in 2020. So you bought the house in that condition. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The lawn that they haven't touched is fine and green, and the stuff that they replaced is all dead, no matter how much we watered.
Okay. But you bought the, you saw, you saw the property, and you bought it that way, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Bergman mentioned that I had gone out and looked at some other right-of-ways on a different project. And I have a, I probably have 15, how was this, that was in another project, that I would say would be in the same situation as over here. So you might say, and I hate to say only $85,000, like Councilmember Goodwin, but $85,000 could turn into three different projects. We could be at $250,000 rather quickly with some of the property that I saw, if they think that there's grants out there. And like I said, some of these, some of these areas, we might want to check out code enforcement, just not, just the right-of-way. And I thought we had had, I thought, and I guess I was wrong, in that we had consensus at our meeting a month ago, that the city would agree to pick up the sod at no cost. And so I thought that that's the direction we took. And I can still support that part of it. I mean, that's a huge, huge project, it's heavy, and to get that out of there. So as we've talked about it, it appears there's three votes against this, but I mean, I could support picking up the sod. And so if we want to move in a positive direction and still show that we want to do something, and I'm not sure that that's even necessary, but I would be willing to do that, what we talked about a month ago at our informal.
I'll second that if you present that later.
Do we want to, just to be clear on what the decision is, take a motion and a second on what's proposed? We can vote it up or down, and then, and then we could go right with the next option if that doesn't prevail? Would that be, I think it would be clear to, clear to staff and everybody on what the direction from council was? So let's start there. Do we have, unless there's other discussion, do we have a motion on what's in front of us, which is a $1,500 hardship grant and disposal of sod in the affected areas?
I would make a motion to approve this.
All right. I will second that, just so we can further discussion and take a vote. Do we have any further discussion on it?
Mr. Mayor, I think we've spent a number of hours on this, all at public meetings, and so I'm prepared to vote. I'll call the question.
Everyone goes prepared to vote?
Well, I'm just, I'm going to give one more example of a problem we had, I've just heard about tonight. You know what you have a lot of in places like Apple Valley? You have something called snowbirds. They go. They don't water late in the fall. They're in Arizona, or New Mexico, or Florida, or someplace.
Not our problem.
Jesus, Ruth, lay off, will you?
All right.
I mean, I'm just saying, this is, this is also a human nature issue, too. I mean, we should take some of this stuff into consideration. I think we have a very, a very reasonable, moderate fix. And I think if we go forward with what I suggested, with the publication, education program going forward, we might not have this problem next year. You're always going to have people that are never going to water, and there's some people are going to complain all the, I understand all that. But I'd sort of like to minimize the problem going forward, and the only way to fix that is with a public education program from our city.
Thank you. Ruth?
I'm sorry, but we did have a public education program on this. You keep saying we didn't. We had a public education program.
Maybe it was a very poor one.
No, it was not. We've heard about it at our informals, or what we told them, the neighborhoods. No, it was a good program, educational program. With that, I'll call the question.
We've got a motion and a second. Again, just so we're clear on what this is with the other discussion, this is the $1,500 hardship grant and the rule of the sod that we are currently voting on. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So that, that motion does not prevail on a two, three vote. And then, Councilmember Grendel, you had a motion you wanted to make about removal of sod. Do you want to advance that one?
And you might have, I might have said yes in the beginning, but I was obviously against.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that, and the staff might have to work on this. I mean, that if we're contacted to pick up sod, that we're willing to do that.
Why don't we ask Matt how that might work, logistically, if we get it right?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I could foresee us sending out a communication to all of the neighborhoods, saying, city's willing to pick up the dead sod, and just with some rules, maybe some dates, Friday each week for a few weeks.
Can you have a template for this from the tornado and tree removal? So you've done something similar. We just follow those provisions?
And as a member, Bergman had said that there were stumps and things sometimes in with the sod, so we want to make sure it's clear, we're only picking up sod.
Yes, yes.
And we'll leave it up to staff to come up with the communication.
We trust staff to come up with that, absolutely. I think they have the direction to pick up sod and put the rules together, correct?
Make that motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Grendel. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Councilmember Bergman. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously, so the plan will be for, to assist with the dead sod removal, and staff will get something out to the neighbors shortly. Thank you, and thank you all for getting us to a decision. I know staff appreciates that as well.
Staff, thanks. All your hard, dedicated work.
Yep. All right. That brings us to staff and council communications. Anybody up here have a voice left that would like to communicate anything?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, John. Go ahead.
I still got a voice. Thanks to everybody for at the parade, for all of the staff that was there, that was there to put it together, pick it up, be part of it. It was pretty, it was interesting and fun. What went on outside of that parade was also well done and well received. So thanks to everyone.
Yeah, we just echo those. Police, fire, parks, streets, everybody had a piece in that. Parks put on some good events, right? We survived a dumping of rain on the morning of the 4th, and you had a grid, diehard group of runners who stuck around for that. So nice job of putting that together as well. But I think another successful year, and one we can be pretty proud of, and we somehow lucked out on weather yet again, so.
And thank you to Pat Jessel for her experience. She is the chair of the committee, and I told her she lives a charmed life, that the sun comes out, certainly before one after rain.
I'd say even the car show at the Legion, it was that Friday night. I got my days a little mixed up now, but they bought 150 cars, probably the best-attended classic car show I've seen in a long time. And Councilwoman Goodwin even made an appearance with his classic car.
Well, it's kind of a regular-looking car compared to the others.
We did note that everybody else had their cars open to sea, and the roofs down, and yours was, doors were locked, and the top was up, so.
Well, the top was, the top would have to be removed. I wasn't about to remove the top.
Anyway, it's a give you a little grief.
Besides, windows were clean, and people could look in the car.
All right.
My T-bird compared to most of the other cars didn't really, it didn't stand out.
It only stands out when you're in it, so.
I love, I love the '57 De Soto with the 45 RPM record player.
All right.
It was a great show.
Tom, are there any staff communications this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do have one. As you know, we are in the middle of a pretty exhaustive look at our park and recreation system. We have some design charrettes coming up, and our park director, Eric Carlson, has more information.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community, so next Monday, July 18th, and next Thursday, July 21st, Monday from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Thursday, the 21st, from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Apple Valley Community Center, 292 Group will be there doing some design charrettes on our recreation
on our recreation facilities. So that's the community center, the senior center, the Hayes Ice Arena, the Apple Valley Sports Arena and the Apple Valley Family Aquatic Center. So anybody from the public that wants to come and provide some input, provide some thoughts, provide some visions of what they may have for our facilities, they're invited to come, stop in 10 minutes, half hour, an hour, whatever they want to spend there on either one of those days and give our architects some information and they'll be putting some drawings together. Ultimately, we're going to get those drawings on our website so that people can then comment and give us feedback. So if you can't make it, you're still going to have a chance to provide some input, so.
And the surveys are still open on the website as well?
Yep, they are, they are.
How's it going?
It's going well, it's going well. And on top of this design charrette, we did one on Friday, June 24th, for the four park master plans and that's Almagnet, Far Cor, Redwood and Kelly. And again, those will be up on the website. Our goal is to have an informal meeting with the council in September where you'll look at all of this information before it goes up on the website and becomes a little bit more public, if you will.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else from staff? All right. With that, we will move on to the calendar of upcoming events. The next special informal city council meeting is Thursday, July 28th at 5:30. And the next regular city council meeting is Thursday, July 28th at 7:00 p.m. And do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Bergman and second from Grundle, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?